...for the hockey team. The kids can get, unfortunately, they don't have to have a civics lesson and sit here and listen to...
Correspondent. I put question marks.
I wanted to do it then. What if, what if there are elongated public comments?
I see a crowd for me out there and I...
That's my suggestion.
I made the call to make it after the pledge of allegiance, but if the public comments are sparse, we can do it there after correspondence. How about that?
Just bug me.
All right, so ordinance 13 is this charter amendment. Everyone got a copy of the revised edition?
Yes.
I reached out to all of the committee chair people. They're on board with it. They think it's cool. Any questions, comments, anything to hash out, anything to edit? Are we happy with it?
Thank you for all the explanations that we're allowed to do this. We can't be overwritten. And that's the good part. I hate to adapt something that's taken come along, go, oh, sorry.
He's not going to look at him.
The summary that Mark sent out is just, you know, for our information, residents ask you about it, how is this legal, that kind of stuff. Now you know.
Yeah, that's why I was saying thank you, Buck, because it clarifies for us, we don't have to work.
It's very cool.
One quick question. With the discussion of maybe two primaries or delaying the primary, I know we have to pass this tonight. If they do two, this goes on the first one, correct?
This, so there's statutory restrictions on how far out you can go, but this would go on the first one currently. And March 4th, at 4:00 p.m., is still the deadline that we would need to file this by. Now, I will mention, as some of you may recall in the past, the county will, Board of Elections, and their staff will review the charter language, that ballot language that everybody's going to see on the ballot. They may have some comments to it, which will come back to us about, so theoretically, this could come before you edit as the ballot language, but I don't anticipate that right now, so.
I'm going to have it till after, after March 4th? So if we submit it by March 4th, we're good?
Correct.
If they have questions, we still have up to...
Yeah, that's the filing deadline. They're in a little bit of a crunch with getting the ballots out overseas that were the way the deadlines go this year, so it would be an expedited process probably, but I, and that's just an FYI, I'm not anticipating right now.
And regarding this passing, Andy, the updating of our charter, John and Mark and I looked it all up. The last charter changes we made, we actually didn't print new booklets. We just had Josephine printed supplementals, which everyone got. And then the online version of the charter is obviously up to date. I would not recommend us printing more because we're going to have the charter review next year, so sometime next December or January of 2024, we'll get that printed. So if this changes, we'll just have a supplemental if it passes. So in that case, we are ready for two and three on this then?
I'm good.
Good? All right. Dave?
Yep.
Okay, 14. This is the insurance, the terrorism insurance? Would you like to speak about that, Max?
Well, property insurance too, which includes terrorism.
Right, that's usually a rider you have to add, right?
Yeah.
It's just a reasonable, for three years, a 7% increase, to be anticipated with everything in the world right now, but they've done pretty well for us up to this point. I don't think there's a need to change, and they're a local insurance agent, which is always good.
So this is basically housekeeping?
Yeah.
Any questions?
What did you say the increase was?
Seven percent.
One, two, three on this, folks, or do we need any further talk on it? All right, Jan, we'll give you that one. All right, the next one is the First Amendment.
First Amendment.
Twenty-one, or twenty, what year is it? Twenty-two, all right?
Twenty-two.
Go ahead, Mr. Verris.
Did you notice the date of my memo? Because I have the numbers free.
Oh, my gosh, you made sure you sent it on that day?
Yeah, I made sure I sent it on on that day.
You had to put Tuesday in front of it too, so you had that other two?
There's all kinds of stuff out on that date.
Yeah. These dates until the 28th are paradigms? You can read them from the back of the audibles?
No, they're...
What are they? Start with a P.
Palindrome?
Palindrome.
It's still the day. All week.
All week until Monday.
You can concentrate there for a while.
Oh, my goodness, I know. I should have emancipated my mouth. All right, so some of the highlights. We're able to repay the general fund from the cap improvements fund, $543,500. The reason we had to advance that money is we had a lot of...
Where's Joe?
Is that here?
He's not a finger today.
Oh, okay. We had a lot of sewer district work that we're waiting on money coming in, so we have to advance money in, so that money is now coming in and we can pay it back. We're putting $100,000 into emergency reserve. We want to do that annually now going forward. You know, we're at 500, let's bring it to 600. We have to add 800 for the safety service fund to, you know, take advantage of that prepayment discount. I decided to pay for the two trucks this year for service, number 11 there, so adding 110 to transfer in instead of borrowing for that. 13, I think the mayor has talked to you about some property that is coming up for sale.
No, you should just leave it there for, you know...
Leave it here? Okay. Oh, we're moving in in case it comes up for sale and for city signage at our entryways. On the expense side, the local fiscal recovery, we received $628,500 last year, and we're going to get it again this year. It is eligible for HVAC improvements, so we're going to designate 500 of that from last year for the family rec center and 150 for city hall. We are in great need of improvements there.
More than great.
Great. That's an understatement.
Dire? Is dire in good...
Just to, just to put in the perspective for you guys, the rec center alone, the quotes we're getting are around 800,000. It's, it's an aging building. We really, in the past, didn't have a good preventative maintenance program, but still, with the aging system, it's not going to last forever either.
Those are all original units, right?
Yeah.
Correct. Same with city hall.
Seven of them.
So adding the 800 for the fire engine, paying back the 545, those are the big, the big items.
Any questions? Mr. Verris is very thorough, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so one, two, three on this, folks. All right. Number 16, the adding of, to the codified ordinances that we had spoke about in the last meeting, so we did the 2019 in the last meeting or the 2020?
Twenty.
Now we're doing the 2021, so this is just more housekeeping here.
And it's unusual that we have them back to back, but missed last year with the transition of clerk's office, so after this will be good until there's the 2022 changes by the General Assembly, which we'll make in '23, a year from now, isn't it?
Would this be something we would do again if the ballot issue passes?
Uh, probably not, no.
Okay.
One, two, three on this. And 17 is the bus. Mr. Mayor, would you like to keep on that?
Sure. So you may remember, we budgeted for the bus, we got a grant that covers a good majority of that. This is just preparing the plans and bids and specs to go out and put it for bid to get the bus, so we're moving forward with it. Don't know what's going to happen with it again, with everything being delayed and finding things that may be difficult, but this is the next step in the process.
We going for a new, we going for brand new?
Yeah, we're not. I don't want to go used.
Okay, just asking, because you said you had priced out some used.
I looked at some used ones, but it's always a gamble, and being a car guy, I can tell you that that's not a gamble I want to make with that amount of money.
And the precious cargo there, right?
I don't want that thing to break down with a bunch of seniors on their way to something fun.
Yeah, you'd pay for that, Mark.
Yeah, I was just going to note, so council, so in section one, there is some, I don't know what I call specifications, but there's some specific references to features that the bus could have. That was just to give you a general idea of what the mayor is proposing throughout the bid for. Those aren't necessarily locked in, but that's generally what the city would be looking at.
It gave us a little flexibility, because we were, with 16 passengers, you don't need a CDL, anything over 16 you do, so we're kind of working through that, but preferably, we're probably going to be 16 or under, just so you all know. But if something popped up and it was the right deal, we may move to a larger bus. A lot of this will do with the handicap accessible and where you put wheelchairs and lock them in all that stuff.
Mr. Ventura, you're going to accept these donations?
I see that, thank you.
Very, very generous.
Under one, two, three on this.
I'm sorry, one, two, three on that, please. If anyone has any questions, just start the, the process for this, so let's get that going.
And will I be making, Ms. Brandt, the two separate motions on this?
So can, he can do them as one motion, correct? He can do this one.
Well, you want to do probably police and fire together as one, and you can do the third separately, or I suppose you can do them all at one, as long as there's no objections. If there's any objections, you'll have to do them separately, so it's up to you.
I, whatever works.
So that's, okay, so they're written as two motions? Yeah. So go ahead and do two. It'll be fast. People, people will fall asleep while we're figuring it out.
I think anybody's got it that way, because it'll keep you separate if anybody's asking this.
I think it applies, yeah. And then we are having an executive session, so all in all, that is the end of the meeting. Tully, Mr. Finley, insurancemen. Anything else? All right, that was a short one. I wasn't sure how long this was going to be, but do we need to talk about how anything is amended for ordinance number 13 for the, do we need to talk about or mention that it was amended for ordinance 13, the charter amendment?
So you'll actually move to amend it to comport with a version that was distributed to council on Tuesday?
Got that, Dave?
Yep.
Comport?
Mm-hmm. Comport.
Sorry. Move to amend to be consistent, whatever.
Whatever comes out of Dave's mouth.
We go brief the deck.
If it was me, I'd be like, uh, amendment something?
The sign of a...
Scrabble words. Brain.
Too long for wordless.
I know.
I still don't understand that one.
It's five-letter words, Benny, you can't figure it out?
I don't, I haven't even tried. I just see that and I see all those boxes and then I go...
It's fun.
Go right past them.
It's fun to guess a word a day. All right, folks, anything else? All right, we'll see you on the floor then.
Okay.
How about in my chair?
Good evening and welcome to the February 24th council meeting. Mr. Hoover, will you...
Twenty-fourth.
I got 24th, 24th. I was looking at it. 24th council meeting. Mr. Hoover, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Now I ask American Legion Chaplain Tom O'Brien to lead us to the invocation and the pledge.
With bowed heads, let us pray. Almighty God, Father of all mankind and judge over nations, we pray thee to guide our work in this meeting. We pray for those who serve the people and guard the public welfare, that by thy blessing they may be enabled to discharge their duties honestly and well. We pray for our leaders that by thy help they may strive earnestly for the spirit of democracy and preserve untarnished our loyalty to our country and to thee. And oh God, a mercy, we ask thy blessing and comfort for our neighbors who may be suffering from mental or physical illness. Cheer them and bring them thy blessing of health and happiness. Amen.
And now please face the flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Okay, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, February 10th, 2022, as submitted by the clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
No, sir.
All right, do we have any correspondence to the clerk?
No, sir.
Well, then we'll move right into the exciting having people in the room today. You're not used to this, COVID kind of shut everything down, but I love seeing people here because it's not normal, so if the hockey team can come up in the front with me, I'd appreciate it.
Just try to make me not in it.
I wish I got a hair, I wish I got a hair like most of these guys when I was that age.
So in bringing you all here today, I have a proclamation for you, this is a bug news all standing back here, and I'll read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas we acknowledge that active participation in organizing athletics is influential to build a good character and teaches a wholesome sense of fair play and good sportsmanship among our youth. And whereas in order to excel in any sport, a young person must demonstrate outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and heart. And whereas, congratulations to the Mardonia Heights ice hockey team, winning three games in the final 24 hours of the regular season, claiming champions of the Blue South Division with a record of 9-1, finishing with a solid overall record of 13-12. And whereas, special recognition to Coach Rich Sennelli, was given the Ryan Tiefel Coaches' Award as top coach in the Blue Division, Blue South Division All-Stars for first team, Nate Owen and Evan Wade, second team, Max Zuszczyn, and Owen Tindall, an honorable mention, no event. Now therefore, I Nicholas Muller, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, do hereby proclaim Thursday, February 24th, as Mardonia Day in our city, extend to the Mardonia varsity hockey team, my personal congratulations to those of all our citizens, who appreciate the team's athletic prowess and wish the success of all future competitions. Congratulations, guys." So I ask the coaches to kind of gradle the season a little bit, and recognize the seniors that are graduating, and if our seniors can tell us a little bit about yourself while you're having the pool party.
A lot of the people that are here saw our season, so it's great to have everybody here. We ended up with a 13-12 in one. The 12 was in there. I would love to have a 13-1 season.
We missed them all.
That's okay. And within the division, we were 9-1 and champions of the Blue South. Nice thing was that some of the players that are here, this is our second championship in the last three years. Truly, last year, because of COVID, we didn't have a division, so I didn't say that we were a backpack championship, but it was a division, stretching it a little bit. Team came together great this year. We went out, we played above our division, every outside game. Ended up also with winning a second place in only within our own Thanksgiving tournament, which the school, our hockey team has never done before, but it's a first for us also there. And it came together and played well. I had two new assistant coaches this year, Dominic Sennelli and Nick Asner. Thank you. Bye. And also, the support of our parents is fantastic, and the support of everybody here helping out and all the... I'd like to recognize a few of the seniors. We have five seniors that are graduating this year, and we'll find out what's happening with them. Come over here, Nathan Owen.
How's it going, guys? Haven't seen much of you guys before, but yeah, I plan to do, carry out my studies at Kent State University and major in exercise science, and I'm looking forward to playing D3 club, so yeah.
Nathan Owen was also one of our assistant captains. Josh Krasinski, assistant captain also.
Hi, I'm Josh Krasinski. I'm going to attend Miami University for mechanical engineering. I intend on playing club hockey.
And our captain this year was Max Zuszczyn.
I'm going to attend at Kent State, where I'm going to study nursing.
Savior T. Door, been on the team since, what, freshman?
Four.
Four-year. Honestly, don't really know, probably did at other high schools.
All right.
And Ashley Salino's been with us for four years also.
So I'm going to go to Kent State Arms College, and I'm majoring in business chemistry and computer technology.
Well, again, thank you guys for coming. I attended four, five of your games, and they were, there were a couple really exciting games, so I thank you for the entertainment of that, because I really enjoyed hockey and I played when I was a kid, so this is kind of special to me, because when I moved here, we didn't have this. If they had it when I was here, I would be standing here for you guys, or if I didn't have the opportunity, so thank you for all you've done, and I wish you guys best in the future. Thank you.
We're all thinking about, is there a way to get a rink in the...
While you're out there, I'll answer that question. I actually looked into it. One rink is five million dollars. That's the holders' pack. It's, it's very, very expensive, and it'd be a great thing for, you know, skating and the weekend and stuff like that, but I don't rule that out, but obviously be able to have priorities in the city and something that's on my mind and always talking about.
Not here, you're not. You're not. You're over. Excellent. Thank you. 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 Okay, we'll move right into our pending or new legislation, starting with ordinance number 13.
I move to amend ordinance number 13 to comport with the version provided in council on Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
I move to author ordinance 13, 2022, for its second and third reading by title only.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance providing for submission to the electors of the City of Macedonia, proposed amendment to sections 4.06 and 4.07, and the proposed creation of section 4.15 of the city's charter relative to meetings of public bodies of the municipality.
I would normally ask the department had to speak on this, but I guess, Ms. Brandt, you would like to?
Sure. This is a version of a charter amendment, which we started at the last meeting, and then we decided to add in the ability for not only council to call a virtual meeting in the event of a health, public health emergency or weather emergency, but also extend that right to the, the commissions and committees around the city, so that's what the amendment was. I think we also amended it, initially it had been required that it was a unanimous decision, now it's just a supermajority, so for, when you have five, it has to be four people. When you have seven in your committee, it has to be five, yes?
Whatever two-thirds works out to.
There you go. So that's, that's where we're at. Once again, this is not, we are not passing a charter amendment, so we can't do that. A charter amendment has to be voted on by the resident. So we are passing this ordinance to put this charter amendment on the ballot for the May 3rd primary, and then once it's on there, the residents will get a chance to choose whether or not we should be able to hold virtual meetings, and that, that we won't know till May.
I make a motion to offer resolution number 17, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the city administration to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the procurement of a bus for community transportation.
So, this is the next step in the process, to go out to bid for a bus for community transportation, as it says, but majority of that would be utilized for our seniors, which I know that they're desperately wanting and asking me for, for a long, long time, and finally, this is coming to fruition. So, I hope that the process moves along quickly, but with the state of supply and demand right now, I don't know what's going to happen, but I vow to keep looking and try to find something once we progress here. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass resolution number 17, 2022, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 17 carries. Any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept donations in the amount of $2,400 from Plastic Process Equipment Incorporated, of which $1,200 will be used for the city police department purposes, and $1,200 of which will be used for the fire department's purposes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept a donation in the amount of $250 from Alexis Johnston, which is to be used for city police department purposes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll go right into the mayor's report. It's going to be very brief tonight, and I think it's prudent with what's going on in the world right now, and I'll just say this. At this time, I find it prudent to take a moment of silence to pray for Ukraine, our country and world leaders, as peace today in Europe was shattered. Committee reports.
We had our Parks and Rec committee meeting for February last week. We did a lot of talking about the beginning stages of the Trails Project. Mr. Chaddick has been working along with Mr. Gelati and actually everyone at the Parks and Rec Department to figure out how to best spend the money that's been allotted $100,000 a year over five years for trails all around Longwood Park, not just in the woods. There's going to be a lot, a lot of talk about that, but we kind of planted the seeds with it. Actually, it's been working, the Parks and Rec Commission has been planting the seeds for a long time, and now it's finally starting to happen. So, we're all very excited about that. That was most of what our meeting was about, and lots of great stuff coming up. Look for the activity guide. I'm sure Mr. Chaddick will talk about that, but Parks and Rec Commission mostly was talking about trails and changes to the parks. So, our next meeting is the third Wednesday of March at 6:00 in the Activity Room at the Rec Center. That's all.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to just remind everybody that on Thursday, March 3rd, the JED Board will be meeting for the first time this year in the council chambers at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll go into department reports, starting with interim director, Mr. Zernak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Service Department's been busy picking up litter. Now that the snow melted, we've been looking for spring restoration, compiling a list. We'll be repairing that as soon as we get some nice weather. There's a spot to report potholes on our website. Just to say, if anyone sees a pothole, please report it so we know we can go fix it. Other than that, that's all I got.
We have a little bit of snow coming this evening, and I know we're prepared for that, so thanks for your preparation in that. Hopefully, it's Ohio, and you know how that goes, and it's the best place in the world to be a meteorologist, because you could be completely wrong and still have a job. So, make lots of money.
They've been pretty spot on this year.
Yep. All right, next up is Mr. Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to start by thanking interim director, Zernak, and the service crew for the amazing job that they've done, taking care of the rec, taking care of the park, and also the streets here in the City of Macedonia. We are very fortunate within the Rec Center, because we get so many people coming in and out every day, that we have received a ton of feedback that I just want to pass on in this council setting to let Mr. Zernak know, him and his crew have done a great job, and the community is very appreciative. We get all the good news over at the Rec Center, so want to pass that on to you guys and congratulate you on a job well done, and I know you'll be ready for the next series of storms that come in, so appreciate what you guys are doing. I want to thank council for the approval of the customer service specialist position that took place at the last meeting that I was on vacation for. We have already made our first hire for that position. It was an internal candidate, Sam Clark. She's a graduate of Kent State University. Last May is when she graduated, so this is a wonderful career opportunity for her, first full-time job in the Parks and Rec field, so we're very excited to bring her aboard in a full-time capacity. The final position to that is still posted right now. We will begin the interview process next week. And our recreation supervisor of facilities and membership position has been filled. Kristin Leggett started this week, so we are really excited to have her onboard. She's already been a great participant in the initial meetings we've had this week, and she is ready, ready to go and hit the ground running, so we're very excited. As Councilman Brandt pointed out, we have our activity guide that'll be coming out next month. We will actually be releasing it online the second week of March, and we will have it in a printed version by the middle of the month of March. It will have all of our summer programming in it, as well as a couple of fall items to sign up for as well. We will get a direct mailer that will be sent to all of the homes in Macedonia in about a week, week to week and a half, depending on how long it takes to get the mail out. So, that'll be coming out. It'll have a QR code on it where people can also sign up to receive an email version of our activity guide. We highly encourage the online version, as we want to limit the amount of printed materials that we need to do. Our intent with this in the long term is to become print-free. We would like to take a green approach to this. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Director Vares?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind the residents that the tax refund deadline is July 15th, and also want to note that March 4th of this year will mark my three-year anniversary of serving the community here. I thoroughly enjoyed it and look forward to my next three, Mayor.
You should have won your tuxedo today. It's your, it's your anniversary.
Thanks. Chief Ripley?
Just three years, John? Okay. That's kind of low, but yeah. I basically have no report. I just want to echo Jason's comments, reference Service Department, my guy's comment, when he come back from hospitals, we get the opportunity during the course of our day to travel from Akron to as far north to Mayfield, and they come back raving about our roads. The other, only other thing I'd like to say is a shout-out to my new wife, and I'll be home soon.
Hey!
That's the end of my report.
I know I've congratulated you privately, but I'll congratulate you publicly as well on your fresh marriage, and I wish you guys well.
Thank you.
Chief Golden?
Thank you, Mayor. Police Department's looking forward to getting some new carpet in my office, the tenant's office, sergeant's office, in various other areas, and new paint. 25 years old, so I think we're about due. So, we've got some quotes for the paint, and carpet should be coming in shortly, so we're hoping, I think we're told maybe next week we might see some paint, so fresh coat of paint. How about that?
Is the carpeting original too?
Yes.
Yeah, it's seen better days. Long time coming. Thank you. Commissioner Rodick?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to give you an update on some of the projects that we have going on and some of those that are waiting in the wings. Starting in the Golden Wing, Panda Express has all of the approvals in place. I imagine they're going to be starting as soon as they possibly can, probably after the weather, and we'll, we'll see that Golden Corral structure finally be removed. Target is going to be doing a $2.4 million interior modification. They'll be changing out some of the flooring, putting in some new restroom fixtures, and they're going to do some renovations to the grocery section. They're also going to be adding a drive-by parking area in the parking lot, where we'll have one of their employees actually deliver whatever product that people would buy to the people. I'm thinking this is going to be a trend we're going to see more so in the retail section. Kind of see it in the food service areas that are not drive-through, like Outback and Applebee's. Optima Dermatology has gotten underway. They started some utility work, so I imagine that they're going to be moving at a pretty rapid pace, as I know that they're already months behind on the job. Moving over to Macedonia Marketplace, Wayback Burgers is probably going to open within the next 45 to 60 days. Moving across the street to Gateway Plaza, Phase 1 of the improvements is underway with the Brighton Spot. That'll be the location that is directly west of the present Brighton area. They started some interior renovation, and Phase 2 of that will be started shortly, which will include a roof renovation. The Brighton present location suffered some serious water damage over the last four or five years because of the roof drainage structure, so they're actually going to reroute the water flow from the roof to its discharge.
Do you mean Burlington?
In the present Burlington space, yes.
I thought you said Brighton. I was confused, sorry.
Did I say Brighton?
Yeah.
Oh, my God, I feel very.
Burlington.
My mind, that's where I go every anniversary, every Christmas.
There used to be a Kmart, so please do not say Kmart.
You know, I actually wrote Brighton down here.
Wow.
Burlington.
Yeah, you know what?
That's okay.
It was just past Valentine's.
I caught it, we're good.
Remember that, Brighton. I have, you probably noticed they've got the dumpsters out there, they moved some trusses on site, I think they're going to be starting very soon. The trusses are actually for a portion of the roof that's going to be reconstructed to go ahead and conceal the HVAC units that are going to be rooftop mounted. Moving down to Macedonia Commons, we're preparing to issue the permit for the Sephora that's going to be part of the interior renovation at Kohl's. We're one of the Kohl's that were fortunate to gain that. Peak Nano is about 50% complete on their Phase 2 renovation, and in the spring, they indicated they're going to be starting the exterior modifications to their parking area. They're going to be adding employees in landscaping, so having more employees, but there's always a benefit. Dominion East Ohio indicated to me that they'll be restarting up in March. They have suspended their operation due to the weather at the end of December. Spruce Hill Phase 3 will be beginning on their land, land clearing and site work on Monday.
Spruce Hill Crossings.
Spruce Hill Crossings, three, yes.
That's very important.
I know. But we'll start, that'll be starting on Monday. We've already sent our notices to the adjoining property owners so that they're aware that there's going to be something happening over there. We do not have any applications yet for our planning commission in March. Tomorrow's the cutoff date, and routinely, the last four hours of the day are spent by the office staff receiving applications, so I'll something to report on that in the future. But we do have one application for water flowing appeals in March, and that will be from Don Bash Jewelers. They've actually modified the site, they've moved the building to minimize the variances and added a high degree of landscaping, landscape mounting, so it was actually well-received by the planning commission this past month. And that's all I have. Unless you have any questions?
Just to be clear on the Spruce Hill, because the property owner that owns Spruce Hill, that's the name of his property, it's Spruce Hill Crossing, so if you have any inquiries related to Spruce Hill Crossings, you should call that, not Spruce Hill, because I think that gentleman was getting a lot of calls, inquiring about the new phases and homes, and it has nothing to do with that gentleman, so Spruce Hill Crossings.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. All right, Director Collins?
Thank you, Mayor. Major project highlights recently for the IT department are doing some hardware upgrades for the police department computers, as well as deploying some new printers that I just got in, and procuring some new tablets for MDTs in the police cars. End of report. Thank you.
How long did you wait for those printers?
About four months.
Yeah.
And I got them for, I want to say they were about 1,500 a piece, and now they're one about 2,300 a piece.
Welcome to the new world of craziness. Thank you. Director Goodetti?
Thank you, Mayor. We, just so council knows, we do have a development in place for Spruce Hill Crossings Phase 3 to kind of help assist and alleviate any construction issues during that phase. Outside of that, just to give council a brief update, the city was involved in a lawsuit filed by one of the contractors on a water main project. There was a disagreement over the amount owed. We recently settled that for the amount that the city had originally proposed as the fair amount, so there wasn't any additional expense associated with that settlement. That's all I have, sir.
What did you say originally? The first thing you said before the?
Oh, the city has a development agreement in place for Spruce Hill Crossing Phase 3 with the developer, and that just controls certain things, such as the time that they can partake in construction, street sweeping, things like that.
I just didn't hear you.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
One comment about the hockey team. No, it wasn't there when you were there, but I want to thank Roy Gardner, Gail Gardner, who used to be on the school board, and their son, Jeff. My kids went to soccer, he wanted hockey, and it was through them that we started. So, had to be, I'm thinking either '97, '98, because they graduated in '99, 2001, they graduated. So, sorry it wasn't here, but it's through them, they were the impetus of hitting hockey in this town.
And you just dated me.
He graduated in 2001.
No, not even close. Well, thank you.
I'd like to take a minute to wish Mr. Bart Benjamin a happy 80th birthday. You guys all see Mr. [applause]. You can find him at the Rec Center, you can find him in the parks, you can find him at VFW events, you can find him all over the place, you can see him here. He's a great friend of the city, and he's a great friend to everyone. Always happy to see him, so happy 80th and happy upcoming 80th to your wife. We're glad to see you.
Thank you.
All right, if nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to RC 121.22G2 to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, and invite the mayor and the law director to join us.
And finance, please.
And the finance director, and, you know, we won't be doing any more after that, so if everyone wants to take off that fine, so we will be back after that to adjourn.
Do you need a second?
Yes.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Everyone's set.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Grabus?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
We are an executive.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We got meeting as adjourned.